Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the committee to hold meeting of the board's order. And we'll probably be having an executive session at 6:00 this evening. And Mrs. Laeger, would you please call the roll? Mrs. Howson?
Here.
Mr. Howson?
Here.
Mrs. Cozak?
Here.
Dr. Lachlan?
Here.
Mrs. Maynes?
Here.
Mr. Musick?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. George? Thank you, Mrs. Laeger. Solicitors report Mr. Nagel.
No report, ma'am.
Thank you. Legislative report, Dr. Lachlan?
Thanks. The charter of school pensions, there was that article, I don't know if you guys read it, but it is, and I haven't realized fully this, that the public schools, we pay 100% of the charter school's pensions, and then the state reverses them 50% on top of that, so they're actually making a profit on it. So Corbett is trying to use the savings he wants to pass legislation that would require the state not to do the 50% reversion. We would still be in charge of 100%, but at least they wouldn't go on top of 100% getting paid, also get reversed 50%. The PA Association of School Business Owners suggested the school districts be allowed to deduct the pension, but then the charter school says since they can't raise taxes, they wouldn't be able to pay their pension costs. It's so easy to throw up the rest of us. But unfortunately, the Senate and House are both trying to push their own bills through this, so hopefully that doesn't tangle it all up, because everybody agrees they should not be getting 150% reimbursement for the pension. And Tom Corbett's also working on carrying back the public employee pension benefits, but preserving anybody who makes $50,000 or less. I haven't given all the details out yet. And then Pennsylvania did deny all applications for cyber charter schools in 2014, and that was six of them. And the state of these states, fortunately, existing thus far have produced dismal academic results for the 45,000 students.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lachlan. EWC TC, Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Cozak?
Yes. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce Derek Carr, and its teacher, Mr. Hoffman, and Mr. Weimer. Derek is being recognized as a student of, for remember, EWC TC, and we're very proud of him, and so we want to recognize him here. So just for one, I'm going to let you...
Go ahead.
Yes.
Or just won't stand here?
No, you can go.
Okay, come on.
Yeah, if you stand there, you're too close.
She wants to get one of those. You got a good angle?
Okay.
Check, check.
It's a great privilege to be here this evening with you all. On behalf of Ms. Bowers, our staff, faculty, our JOC students, we're very thankful that you let us come here this evening to present Derek. Derek is a student that generally would fly under the radar, and with that, we're very proud of him. Derek is an A/B student at the high school, he is an A student at the CTC. No discipline, very good attendance. He's an active member of our National Technical Honor Society, and he's been a student at the CTC through his, or since his ninth grade year. He's a pre-vote student. And with that, he's had an opportunity to excel through his program. He has been out on COOP. For those who aren't familiar, COOP is a program that allows students, when they complete a certain percentage, 80% of their task list at the CTC, they're able to go out and get a real-life job experience. And he has been doing so for this entire school year dating back to last year. Derek has brought a crowd with him here this evening, and I'm going to ask that he introduce all of them. It's a testament to the support that he has from his family. With that, we're very glad to see them all here this evening, and many of them were at our JOC meeting where we presented him in November. With that, I want to introduce Mr. Hoffman, who's his instructor in the collision repair program.
Thank you. I apologize. This is my second night here, not getting COVID before nine o'clock, so I still have putty dust all over me. If you brush up against me, I promise it does just brush off. But Derek has been a student of mine since ninth grade, and he is actually my first pre-vote that I got to see all the way through. I'm very proud of what Derek has achieved. As a ninth grader, I could see there was a leader inside of him, although he was still an awkward, shorter version of what he is now. But by his 10th grade year, he became the class leader of my AM group. My AM group is all my first-year students. That class leader carried over to his junior year. At the end of his junior year, the opportunity came up for him to go to work at Smells, and I put my signature on him right away, and I wished him best of luck. He's been working there ever since, and as far as I'm aware, Derek has a full-time position available the day he graduates. So that's everything I could ask for out of any student. Like Mr. Weimer said, he is an NTHS student, so he's been attached to Mrs. Caper's side, running the NTHS organization. He's been a great member at our school, and I'm just proud to have him as a student. So Derek, it is now your turn.
Thank you all for being here. I'm glad I made student of the month for November. Ninth grade, when I went there, they, well, ninth grade, they asked us if we wanted to join tech, and there was a couple of us, and I was one of the first to raise my hand, I wanted to go. I chose collision repair, I always wanted to work on cars, and not really the engine or anything, but more like painting, custom painting, bodywork. So that's why I chose collision repair. Go in ninth grade helped me a lot, got me a head start in front of everybody. I was able to go on COOP in 11th grade, get out in the workforce, start getting paid. It was nice. I got a brand-new car, I'm able to make payments on it. And I want to thank everyone for being here. Thank my parents, thank Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Weimer, my father, my little sister, Shawna, and Heather for being here, supporting me. And thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Derek?
Where do you have your poster? Do you have your poster with you?
I have it at home, but yeah, I have a poster. I have a friend go up.
Do you?
Yeah.
Where are you doing your COOP at?
Uh, Smells.
Oh, yeah. It's good. They're good folks.
Yeah.
You like it there?
I love it.
Yeah. You can sell there.
Yep.
Learned a lot over there, too.
Oh, yeah.
I'll bend my new car up there.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Derek.
It's all very...
Yeah.
Congratulations. Thank you. You guys can leave.
Thanks for our...
Going forward, there's a summary of the JOC actions that's going to be out in your, in the packet here.
Thank you. And do you want to keep going forward as a block?
I'm going to recognize Amy O'Hearn, who is a senior high school senior, junior, sorry, who is here to speak tonight about her Girl Scout Gold Award project and the Bagley Recycling team. Or she works in...
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Amy O'Hearn. I'm a junior at Greater Latrobe Senior High. I am also a member of the recycling team and a Girl Scout of Western Pennsylvania. As a Girl Scout, the highest honor one can receive is the Gold Award. I am currently pursuing this award. In order to receive this project, to receive this award, I have to complete a project that will positively impact my community. Mr. Rickford, the senior high recycling chairperson, has graciously agreed to be my Girl Scout Gold Award advisor. He has been educating me on how to run a paper recycling program. Being a member of the recycling team, I am aware of the importance of recycling. My hope is to establish a recycling program at Bagley Elementary. I have received approval for my project from the property and supply committee. In addition, I talked with Ms. Harizo, she's also on board with the project. I am seeking approval from the school board. If approved, I will have to submit a proposal to the Girl Scout Gold Award Committee before I can continue on. I've already been verbally approved, but I have to receive a written approval. After receiving this approval, I will be looking for a teacher to volunteer to chair the program. Ms. Harizo and I discussed opening the program to only sixth-grade students. In May, I will present information about the recycling program to the fifth-grade students of Bagley Elementary. I will also help make arrangements for the paper recycling pickup and for the delivery of the bin. In addition, I will assist in the program and will seek senior high recycling team members to help. Mountain View Elementary already has a successful recycling program in place. It is run mostly by teachers and custodians. I feel it's very important to get the students excited through their involvement in the program. Mountain View has opened their bin up to the public. I would like to use their success as a model and open the bin at Bagley for public use. This will also help us meet the two-time minimum that's required monthly. Once again, I am asking for your support, and we welcome any suggestions.
We don't have any more paper on the school board anymore. Right, I'll lock that. That's right.
Well, I have a lot. Not as much as Mrs. O. [inaudible].
You save it, bring it to Bagley.
I am.
Well, and there isn't any place at LES where you could have bins and so forth. So I'm glad that there's going to be one at Bagley, because there are bins and so forth at United Township, and they have a work-winning program there. I think that it would be nice if the schools could have a piece of that. And I think that it's important to teach students about recycling. I know I have a terrible time with my children who aren't grown. They don't believe it's important. They believe that it doesn't matter, that those people just take that stuff and put it in a garbage dump anyway, blah, blah, blah. So it's good that you're going to be doing this with students beginning as young as they are in elementary school. And I wish you well with the project, and plan to be able to do it myself.
Thank you.
Amy, what is your projected timeline to start?
I would like to lay the foundation in the summer and throughout the rest of the school year. And I would like to start the program with the students, the sixth-grade students involved, in September. I would like to try to find a teacher in May, and also present to the students in May.
Sounds wonderful, Amy. You did a wonderful job speaking. We'll ask them to sure, who can turn through or want to understand any problems with it. And thank you for coming and doing this for our community and our school district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, guys, I have to go now.
Time to act and follow.
Thank you, Kurt.
All we have is weather.
I feel like we covered the bulletin. I saw Tyler slamming the other player. I feel like the rest of them, I feel like that guy's, mother nature's been slamming me all week or all month. Weather's been completely awful for construction. All exterior construction activities, site-related as far as the upper field, any site concrete and metal roofing, those are the three big key things to get done come spring. Has been very minimal as far as construction, and as far as, you know, foreseeing the completion of that, those activities, it's 100% weather-related, and looking for a break. So that's really the negative aspect of what's been going the last couple of months, is the extreme cold temperatures, and of course, the snow. I think we've had almost two feet of snow in the last month, are the real negative aspects to your project. The positives are, as far as the interior work, the fieldhouse and the press box, we're progressing pretty well. A lot of the finish work, you can see through the images, you see flooring going in, weight room flooring's going in, a lot of the pan's complete, with some minor touch-up on doors and logos and whatnot is ongoing. Ceiling tile been going in, all the light fixtures are complete, the HVAC grills and the fusers are also in place. So as far as interior work, I see beginning of March, first week in March, you know, as far as that being wrapped up and being good completion.
And what the general contractor has done to address the weather, the way it is, and the lack of being able to get that metalwork put on, is he's gone ahead and put water ice guard over the entire roof to create a temporary roof that will be a water-type system that will allow us to get a temporary option to use the building if the metalwork can't be completed by the time you want to use it.
So that's the big kind of elephant room is the metalwork panels there. Addressing, we've had multiple means with the manufacturer, also the PA Roofing, which is the subcontractor, and Gertner is the GC, gave us, believe the game that Kate mentioned, the ice and water shield was in place to give you a good water-type roof system. As far as costs, you know, nothing is outstanding as far as the pay apps. There, for the action meeting next week, there are four changers we've talked about. These aren't new, they just were on the action meeting for last month. Change orders for the light fixture up front, the parking lot, the louver redesign, and the hillside water issue that we had in the summertime, and the existing junior high storm line. So again, nothing new as far as change orders.
This is just the paperwork I'm finally pitching out to do.
As far as your athletic complex, that's all I have as far as an update. Again, you know, start praying for good weather. Looks like next week we're still be in the 40s, but I'll believe them, I see it as...
Considering it was 10 degrees in the car when you got here at 7:00.
Yes.
Yes, and the junior high piece is currently out to bid. We have a preview being scheduled for here at the CSC on Thursday at 10:00, and after that, we will probably get a contact available to show the site. Everything seems to be going well with that, but we seem to have a lot of, a lot of interest in it. There's been a lot of contractor calls, so we're expecting a good show, a good turnout.
Can I just add, everyone, you can see there's a caption of the comments we heard about the athletic project, and there's photographs in there of what's completed, the interior photos. It's very impressive. Very impressive. So I just want to make sure you check them out.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then item D, we have an agenda item to approve, facilities assessment for Latrobe Elementary School. Well, that was all the, those were all the things. The change orders that have been, the same change orders we finally just have announced in the agenda. Okay. Item E, approved, a special study for Latrobe Elementary, also an agenda item, and we'll have bid opening on February 27th for general construction, and the flooring, which is what Hank was supposed to put for the general project. And G, our next meeting is March 6th at 3:30 at Central. And that concludes.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cozak. Education planning, the students are here with us, and we welcome Adam and Kate.
Hello. The elementary schools are very active in both fundraising and for helping with important causes in the community. First, the Bagley Student Government Board will be hosting a Valentine's Day sale, and all proceeds will go to Haley Vanderweil, I'm not sure if I said that right, a former Bagley Elementary School student who's bravely battling cancer. Second, LES Student Council is hosting a cutest baby contest, and all the proceeds for that will be donated to the Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh. And lastly, student council representatives from LES, as well as teachers, will be going to the End Hunger Cafe in downtown Latrobe once per month to help to serve meals to people in our community. So from a young age, Latrobe students are very interested in helping out those around them.
Every semester, Canametal gives Latrobe students the opportunity to experience engineering firsthand through the Young Engineers Program. This semester, 14 students graduated, and before their graduation, helped repack donated food, as well as earning a $1,000 donation from Canametal that matched the student service hours in the community. That's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enrollment report, Mr. Crowell.
The report's there for you to take a look at. I'm not...
Nothing, no worries. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Educational programs, Dr. Tepper.
Yes, that's a result of our curriculum committee meeting. We have our lead principals here speaking, Mr. Lucassio and Mr. Frelick, presenting some course changes and additions along with their teachers who will be speaking.
Good evening. We have a number of teachers with us here today. We're going to be going over some additional new courses at the senior high and junior high. Mr. Frelick and I are here because rather than having the teacher leaders have to come up twice, we're going to do it together, because some of them have additions in both buildings. We've asked the teachers to keep their presentations relatively short, out of respect for your agenda this evening, but certainly they'll be here to answer any questions that you may have. We're going to go ahead and begin, we'll begin with Mrs. Butler.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I am Michelle Butler, and I am the teacher leader for the Business Education Department, 7 through 12. In several meetings with George and Steve and Chad throughout the last several months, we have a couple changes I just wanted to mention to you. First of all, the current Business Essentials course that I teach, we're just doing a name change on it, and it's going to be Introduction of Business. So as I continue to talk, I'm just going to refer to it as Introduction to Business. We are working very closely with Penn Highlands and to create a pathway for our students in business courses. So we felt it essential to start that pathway at the ninth grade level, and so we are going to open that Introduction to Business course up to ninth-grade students, and it will be eligible for them to take for college credits. In addition to that, we are, our current entrepreneurship class that I teach at the high school, we're going to break that curriculum apart, move part of it into the Introduction to Business course, and move part of it into what I hope to be a new course, which would be Principles of Marketing. And we'll be focusing on the main elements of the marketing mix, current issues with marketing, doing different case studies, and things of that sort. The Introduction to Business course, the Accounting One course, and this new Principles of Marketing would all be offered for college credits, so that students could leave here with nine business credits. And Georgia and I have been working with Penn Highlands, they currently offer two associate's degrees. And with my business courses, in addition to some other courses taught in our district, in the math department, and the English department, and the art department, students could potentially leave here with 15 to 18 credits towards an associate's degree from Penn Highlands. So my proposal tonight is to allow us to introduce this new Principles of Marketing course, and it would replace entrepreneurship. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Butler. Next, we're going to move on to technology education, and I'd like to introduce senior high teacher, Mr. Stanton Glamp, and also junior high teacher and teacher leader, Mr. Ron Owens.
The new course that we're going to offer at the junior high is going to be an Introduction to Engineering. We're going to try and keep it a hands-on course. We'll still be teaching computer aided drafting. Stanton at the high school, we want to combine two courses to create an advanced computer aided drafting and design course. We're finding with today's software that we're giving to kids, that they're getting the drawings done at a much faster rate and a much higher quality. And in industry, everything's changing very quickly, and we have to change with it. And in my career, I've seen a lot of changes, and I think we're going to see a lot more. And I think Stanton coming over has done a really nice job in linking us up with Canametal, and I think we want to continue that pathway in engineering. And Dr. Tepper has been looking for other methods and other avenues for us to do that. In the woodshop, we have our CNC machine, and we're constantly looking to update and move forward with our program. And I think the addition of these two courses will definitely help us meet some of those needs. And will it Stanton add?
As far as what I would like to do, currently at the high school, we have three computer aided drafting courses. One is an entry-level class, that's just the regular CAD course, and then we also have an advanced architecture class and a design engineering class. What I would like to do is take the advanced architecture and the design engineering, combine it into one course, to sort of focus my attention on a continuation of what I offer at a beginner level, and just make this much more advanced and allow the students to have half a year of, it would be a one-year course, but it would be half architectural, half mechanical. And then at the end of the year, it would sort of give them, I'd like to give them the opportunity to sort of pick, have, do an independent project, where they sort of could either pick an architectural proposal or like a mechanical proposal, and have to develop the drawings and stuff for their design. And our goal for this as well, I know there's been a lot of communication with trying to create a dual enrollment for our subject, and we've been speaking with Penn State, some local Penn States, and this would be one that I would really anticipate would be a good one for myself to align with a college course. So, any questions on that?
What's the, what do we offer now? What's the first course you'll offer right now?
At the junior high level, I, we offer a communications technology course, which is a CAD class, but there's some engineering involved also in that course. It's a 60-day course. We're going to replace that course with Mr. Pletcher's Intro to Manufacturing course in eighth grade. And now that I would move to the ninth grade, we'd be offering a half a credit in the Introduction to Engineering, if that's what we offer at present.
And what are you doing now?
At the high school, I, we offer a multitude of classes, but in the, in the computer aided drafting area, we have three courses. So the one is the first-year course, and then we have an architectural drafting, which is a whole additional year that is, the CAD course is a prerequisite for that. And then we also have a design engineering, which is sort of like a mechanical discipline. I was going to take the advanced architecture and mechanical and combine them into one, Advanced CAD.
But that beginning class still stays.
Oh, yes, yes. That's going to be the prerequisite for this course, yeah.
Thank you.
We're still, we're still presenting T-squares and giving them a theory.
Yeah, I just want to scare kids away or something.
Oh, no, 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 no. And I've talked to them a lot, because I was a little bit afraid that if, you know, if I took these two courses and combined them, and one kid was very, just, you know, set on trying to go for architecture, that that would turn him away from the fact that that was combined. And they all, they all told me that if that was the only, you know, CAD course that was offered, they would still definitely take it in addition. And I sort of thought it would help focus their attention into one area, and still expose it to both of them.
Thank you.
I would just add that what you heard from Mrs. Butler and what you're hearing from Mr. Owens and Mr. Glamp, talks about career pathways, and Dr. Tepper has done a wonderful job in getting...
and who will be teaching the new course, will share with you a video about the course. The Introduction to Programming course is based on a curriculum and software that was developed by professors at Carnegie Mellon University and that program is called ALICE. This curriculum is currently used in high schools across the country for students of all ages, interests and abilities. The goal of the course is to introduce students to computers and computer programming. It uses the language Java that students do not have to know or learn the language to succeed in the class. The course will be a year-long course. The prerequisite for, in mathematics will be geometry. And although it will give the students a great opportunity and a venue to improve their mathematical problem-solving skills, it is not intended as a replacement for Algebra II or any of the other traditional math courses. Students will be encouraged to take this class in addition to their other math classes. After completing the course, students can then take AP Computer Science. However, students could still take the AP Computer Science class without this, without this class. It is not a prerequisite for it. At this time, Wendy, who is very familiar with the ALICE program, having learned about it at some summer workshops that she took at CMU, will share with you the need for the course and how our students will benefit from it.
Good evening. As we're aware, computer science really is a foundational field for all of our 21st century careers and our areas of study. And if we allow our students to learn the basics of computers, they'll be better prepared for a world that is now so dependent on technology. A computer science degree is now one of the top paying degrees that a student can get and computer programming jobs are growing at an average of two times the national average. It is projected that in the year 2020, we will have 1.4 million computer science jobs available and 400,000 computer science students. It is my desire that we be able to allow our students to learn these skills of programming to help them increase their problem-solving skills. Doesn't matter if they're going into problem sol, or into computer science fields, they'll be able to use this and to help enhance their analytical thinking and their problem-solving skills in other careers that they may be competing for outside of Latrobe. So as a basis, I'd like you to see a video presentation that was developed at CMU and it shows the use of this enhanced program and the environment for programming that the kids would learn. And if you'll notice, the, it is a 3D animation, so it really engages the student and it is a lot of fun to work with. I enjoyed every minute of learning this at CMU. So I'd like you to see the video. It's very, very brief and I thank you for your attention.
ALICE is a system to try to get people's worth of exposure to learning how to program a computer to be a pleasant one. We have got a system where students can make small 3D animated movies and/or 3D video games. They do that by dragging words into the system where they cannot make a mistake. It's all that majority of children, majority of adults are visual learners and ALICE teaches visually. And so you get a chance to watch what your program actually does in a way that no other could do.
This tool is really, and I grabbed his attention, and properly used can really help them understand some very key ideas in a way that is intuitive and engaging and motivating.
It builds is tremendous problem-solving sense and it helps tremendously for students programming.
What we're trying to do with programming is allow people to figure out how to get machines that they have to do the work that they need them to do and allow people to do the things that they're invested in which is creatively solving problems.
Thank you very much. If there are any questions?
You guys are just teasing us. Mr. Lucassio.
Mr. Lucassio.
I always miss some turnovers.
Thank you, ladies. We have one additional course to talk about tonight. I'd like to introduce to you our English department, Ms. Casey Hopper.
Thank you. Good evening. The course I would like to present this evening is titled Foundations of Broadcast. And this would be a course that would be offered to ninth grade students on a semester basis. And so this course is designed to provide junior high students with the opportunity to gain hands-on experience in video production and broadcasting. They would work in the senior high television studio to create programming that would then be shared with the junior high audience through an online format, but also using the Promethean boards in all of the junior high classrooms, we could actually broadcast the programming that the students would create. And so some of the projects that the students could work on would be news stories, student interviews, commercials for upcoming projects, and then we can put these into a bi-monthly or monthly show that would then be shared with the junior high audience. And so we also thought that this course would be a great opportunity for students to take those projects that they're creating and maybe put them into a print or online format so that they get exposure actually transferring that story into a variety of different formats and sharing that with their audience. So then when they come up to the high school, they are able to sort of be familiar with all areas in our communication way. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to get them to me. Thank you. Thank you.
On behalf of the senior administration and the junior administration, I just wanted to thank our teacher leaders, our teachers for being here tonight, not just for being here tonight, but more importantly for coming to us with these ideas and wanting to utilize their talents and their knowledge to come up with these courses that when I hear about them, I think of the words engaging, I think of relevancy, I think of responding to the needs of our students and what they need as we move forward. And as a student, I hear a lot of people saying, I wish I was a student now. I think all of us can think of a course in our lifetime that we took as a student that had that moment for us, it really clicked. And I think any one of these six could be that course, if not more, for students in the future here at Latrobe and we're excited. So, thank you for being here, thank you for the presentations. Thank you.
Thank you all.
One, one final note, I'm sorry. We also included notes in your presentation regarding the junior high. There are several other changes at the junior high that are occurring. These are only the new courses. We have some program shifts in terms of moving course sequences around, eliminating the trimesters in the junior high and a few other changes. We're going to be presenting that to you in March in greater detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all the teachers who came out this evening. I found that very exciting. You didn't hear what I said, of course, I think I went to school at the wrong time. Quite a fun thing. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to ask of the administration, these courses fit into the requirements of the state that, for what we must present in, in order to give diplomas?
Yes. Most, a lot of them are elective courses.
Mm-hmm. Yes. And I, I think it's a great kind of setup, I mean, of studying all or something, this is an opening day, something that's really interesting. I think this is great.
Great job. Thank you very much. And we'll move to the building report.
Thank you again, teachers, and Mr. Lucassio and Mr. Kralik. And now we have Mrs. Holler from Latrobe Elementary School presenting her building report and I believe she has a couple of teachers with her this evening as well.
We have the evening, definitely, we're going to use. Sorry, keep up the movement.
Good evening, everyone. I am very pleased to welcome two teachers with me this evening. Our first is a Title I teacher, Mrs. Pearl Brazili, and a learning support teacher, Dr. Teresa Vissinko. She got her doctorate this year, so we're so excited for her. Come on, ladies. We are presenting this evening, Response to Instruction and Intervention. And in other words, you'll hear it called RTII. And we're going to talk about how it's relevant to what we do at Latrobe Elementary School, but this truly is a system that is present in all of the, all of the elementary schools. It is not just LES, but that's what we're going to talk about in particular this evening. The reason we wanted to share is we were really excited about our school performance profile score at 93 and we started digging down a little further as to how we're getting, how we're getting scores, how we're moving kids and what we're doing with children. This came from our school performance profile and it's just a reminder of the makeup of LES, how many students we had, that we are working with a 39% economically disadvantaged group, almost 13% special ed and a very small portion of English language learners. Before we can show you what we're doing with RTII, you need to know just a little bit about what it is. And it is a program, it's a system that is implemented to look at how you're implementing your standards and what you're doing with them and looking at how to improve. We really look at data. That is really what it's all about. It's down and dirty with data. So tonight, you're going to get a little down and dirty with us and look at some numbers because, believe it or not, data can be exciting. And we are using our data to inform our practices to decide how we're going to monitor children and what we need to do. It is a multi-tiered system. We're going to show you a chart. It's a three-tiered system and it truly does give us a map as to where students are, where they need to go, where they have been. And we match our decisions with the data with the instruction. The most important part of RTII is it is not a special education program. It's a proactive program to help all of our children be successful. We call it an every-Ed initiative. Every child is involved. Here's the chart and you'll see many of these online. There's different types, but it is a three-tiered system. Most of the time, you will see the triangle. And if you look at the bottom, that is called Tier One. All students come to you as a Tier One. And then you provide your assessments and as students need extra help, they move up through the tiers to a Tier Two. We do more assessments and then a Tier Three, we're really looking at providing different types of curriculum to the students. So that is just a general outline of what it is. At LES as well as at Mountain View and Bagley, all of our Tier One students, and they will tell you that we really like to have 80% of your students at Tier One. That's the ultimate goal. But at Tier One, our students, and we're going to talk in particular with reading this evening, they are using our Storytown program and we give them progress monitoring at the middle and end of year. We'll get a baseline at the beginning and then we'll monitor students halfway through the year and at the end of the year. Just to make sure that they are continuing to make progress in the regular curriculum because that's what's working for them. If we find a student is struggling, we'll put them in Tier Two and they will tell you that about 15% of your students may fall into Tier Two. We still use our Storytown reading program, but at this point, we use an extra period during the day, an extra 40 minutes to provide some instruction and intervention to those other students. We continuously progress monitor them. We'll provide interventions for 10 days, we'll progress monitor. We're going to show you how we chart students' data and how we can see if they're struggling or if they're progressing. Twice a month, we have grade level meetings. All of the teachers get together. That includes title teachers, learning support teachers, classroom assistants, and we talk about kids and we talk about what we need to do with children. And then at every month, at the end of the month, we have representatives who come together and what we call a Building RTII meeting. And we'll continue to check on those students and we'll talk about kids that aren't making progress after we've checked them three times. At that point, after decent amount of time, we're really looking at possibly a full year, half a year, 5% of our students could be in an alternative reading program. And here at Latrobe, we offer what's called Read Well or Language. Read Well is given to primary, Language is given to the intermediate grades. Many of the students in our life skills programs are participating in these types of programs as well as other students that just aren't making progress in the Storytown program. When we decide to move a child to Tier Three, we meet with the parents, we meet with the school psychologist. At that point, we would request an evaluation for special ed. So gone are the days when a child isn't learning and all of a sudden you just say, oh, I think we need to do an evaluation. When we refer for a special ed evaluation, we have a lot of data behind us. And right before we get into all of our data, this is pretty much what RTI looks like. It has required teachers at an elementary level to work together. And if you remember, many times, we got used to at elementary to have our 25 or 20 students, we close our door, we teach our kids and we love them to death and we do the best job we can. The needs are so great that it has required our teachers to open their doors, share their children, talk about their kids, and it really is a paradigm shift for everybody. But we're excited to show you tonight, after about five years of doing it, how it actually works. It's not easy. It requires a lot of communication and we're really excited to show you that. When we're able to do all of those things, students move and they're moving in the right direction. This chart's a little hard to see. Dr. Vissinko, you want this?
I think one of the most valuable components of the RTII is looking at this data and how it is organized in this chart. And the first column, what we do is we actually put the skill that the child is struggling with or that skill deficit. Then we, when, we go and the next column is when that intervention is taking place, who is giving the intervention and exactly what we're doing to work with that child to help with the intervention. Then we do our progress monitoring data. And, and I know it's hard to see, but then we have actually drop-down menus that say, is this child making progress? A column to put the actual data and whether or not that child is making progress. And then also on the side, there's notes because we all know that notes that may not make it into our data are as valuable. The child was extremely sick when he was progress monitored or there was a, something happened in the family. But we go through all of this and what happens now, we have this plethora of data that we can look at. And as Mrs. Holler said, we as teachers meet, we actually do the same thing. We put a completed chart up on the smartboard and we sit and we look and we analyze data and we talk about the child and we are able to make valuable instructional decisions based on how that child is doing. This is our, sorry, this is our dibbles.
It requires a lot of communication, and we're really excited to show you that. When we're able to do all of those things, students move, and they're moving in the right direction. This chart's a little hard to see. Dr. Vassinko, you want this?
I think one of the most valuable components of the RTII is looking at this data and how it is organized in this chart. And the first column, what we do is we actually put the skill that the child is struggling with or that skill deficit. Then we go, and the next column is when that intervention is taking place, who is giving the intervention, and exactly what we're doing to work with that child to help with the intervention. Then we do our progress monitoring data. And I know it's hard to see, but then we have actually drop-down menus that say, "Is this child making progress?" A column to put the actual data and whether or not that child is making progress. And then also on the side, there's notes, because we all know that notes that may not make it into our data are as valuable. The child was extremely sick when he was progress monitored, or there was a...something happened in the family. But we go through all of this, and what happens now? We have this plethora of data that we can look at. And as Mrs. Haller said, we as teachers meet, we actually do the same thing. We put a completed chart up on the smartboard, and we sit, and we look, and we analyze data, and we talk about the child, and we are able to make valuable instructional decisions based on how that child is doing. This is our... This is our DIBELS data, and it's just showing each grade level. The green columns are showing our Tier One students, and this was for the beginning of the year, and our Tier Two students are in purple. Tier Three is the last column, and I chose green because green means they're good to go, and purple is the color of the folders that we keep our intervention stuff in, so we live purple, and it just seemed to fit. But the percentages are there. They're hard to read. I think we have other graphs that will show it a little bit more clearly. Click to the next one. This is our grade level for the beginning of the year. We have six going down to first. I didn't include kindergarten, because they do not qualify to even be considered Tier Two until this time of year. They're just entering the building. They haven't had any, you know, education at this point, so we are just monitoring them in the classroom and giving them the general education. At this point in the year, this would have been done in September, and this is where our classrooms at LES stood at that point. This was our school-wide data for the beginning of the year, and we were able...I did it as our pyramid, so the green is our Tier One, purple's Tier Two, and Tier Three is so small that you don't even see it, which is the way it should be, but it's showing the differences in what we have to achieve in order to make our students grow. We need to get rid of some of that purple. Go to the next one, please.
I just included this slide for you, and again, it's a lot of numbers, but the one that's in yellow in the middle, I think, is so important, because from beginning of the year to the middle of the year, we can look at every grade level, and those were the students that moved to Tier One and stayed there. They did not slip back. And I think that's pretty exciting data to look at, that we have, you know, 27%, fourth grade, 49% of the kids that were in Tier Two went to Tier One and stayed there. Now, we did have some kids, you know, falter back and forth. We're always doing checks on them, but that was really good data for us.
This again is our middle of the year, and it's basically the same format, the number of students. What we had in green is our Tier One, and our Tier Two is in purple. If you look at the next slide, you'll see the improvement we had, which was very happy improvement and very exciting for us to see, that we were able to move a lot of that purple down into the green, and that's where they should be, and that's where we want them to This is our middle-of-the-year school-wide data as a school building. This is now where we stand. If you click to the next one, you will see the comparison, and we are very happy and very proud to be able to share this information with you.
This just really validates what we've put in motion years ago. We've tried to perfect it as the years have gone on, and we continuously, you know, meet and try to get better at what we're doing. We are not at the 80% where we should be, but we are showing growth, and we're moving kids in the right direction. And the teachers work really hard to do that, and I'm just very proud of them and their efforts, and our parents' efforts, and all they do to get the kids to tutoring and working with the different interventions. And just, we're going to leave it on this note. We're excited with the direction we're going, and we hope to continue that. So thanks for allowing us to present. Thank you. Any questions?
Just to go quick, how do parents get into this again? It seems like they wait until they get to three and they're in trouble before the parents are engaged, or they...
No. As soon as the child becomes involved in an intervention, the parents get a phone call from the teacher, and they also get reports as we do all their progress monitoring.
And then how often does the staff or you be with the parent as that's going through that process?
It would all depend. We do our conference time, and then it would depend on the needs that the parent has and that the child has.
Why doesn't...explain that one more time. You rattled off a bunch of information before. The parent is engaged at Tier Three?
No, no.
Or Tier Two?
Tier Two.
They're showing signs of trouble or stagnation or something like that?
Yes.
You guys are doing your job, I know that. I'm just trying to figure out where the parent's involvement is. How much involvement do they have? I know you struggle with that. The school struggles with that.
They're involved as soon as I think that teacher makes that phone call. We have many parents that bring their kids to tutoring. Our building is really busy on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. We have parents that come in, and we'll get different interventions from the teachers, and we'll implement them at home. But they're involved as soon as we see something going on. They're an integral part of this whole process.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
They really are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We moved to Item D under...we do need to revise again the 2013 school calendar, 2013-2014 school calendar because of the continuing snow days or cold days or whatever it wants to be called. We will...we already talked last time about President's Day, and February the 17th will now be in session. In addition to that, April 21st, which we call Easter Monday, I guess, will also be school in session. It will be a snow makeup day, and three days will be added to the calendar in June, the 6th, the 9th, and the 10th for snow makeup days. So those revisions for the calendar will be on your agenda next week. To approve, we did not vote on the President's Day, because it was already voted on as the snow makeup day on the last calendar, but we are now adding days to the calendar, so it now requires a vote to revise that. Any questions about that? You have an attachment there for the last curriculum meeting. We are having another curriculum meeting next Tuesday at 5:30 here at the CSC before the regular head of the board. On your agenda next week will also be an agenda item to approve, the Westmoreland County Student Assistance Program for 2014, 2015, and that's a year later. Lisa Bombiani-Smith is doing a doctoral dissertation, and she's asking our permission to solicit participants, students, namely in her research study. So Mrs. Bombiani-Smith is with us this evening. If you would like to ask her any questions. Would you like to give us a brief overview of that?
I don't have the microphone out. Very big metal. I started my doctoral studies in July of 2011, and so I finally reached the dissertation phase, and I am focusing on phenomenological research, which is interested in describing, not proving or using statistics. We want to get at the essence of what someone is experiencing. And because writing is my passion, I have chosen to focus on what it is for our students or any students to be writers, academic writers, and what that process is like for them. From the moment that they decide to enter that process, because quite frankly, I may ask a student to write something, but he or she does not have to do it. They can choose not to. It's not a good decision, but they can. And then once they're in that process, how they navigate and they maneuver through that. If they're faced with conflict, how do they resolve that conflict? If I, as a teacher, ask them to make a change, and they don't want to make that change, what happens? And then when do they decide to leave? When do they own that piece of writing and decide to stop and say, "This is it. This is what I presented to you as a teacher"? And so that's what my question is. What is the lived experiences of students as writers? And in that description, hopefully pull from that some commonalities between them that will allow us as teachers to dig into the core standards that now ask us to focus more on writing, argument and support, and those critical thinking elements, so that as we are looking at the student's experience, we are then able to then design curriculum and instruction that meet that rigor. And so by recruiting students, I would like to recruit seven students, to interview them, and simply ask them to share those experiences with me, and then transcribe those interviews, and then start to pull out the themes, the common things that we can improve that, to describe that process of what it is to be an academic writer. And that is my study. Two and a half years in the making. But if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Yes, Ms. Baller?
Well, you have to have parental approval.
Yes, absolutely. I spoke with Mr. Swire and Mr. Prempel last week, and Dr. Tepper and I have been talking throughout the time period, the two years. I have parental consent forms that I will have to get signed. The student will sign a consent form as well. And in that, it basically says that I will have to explain to students what they are required to do, which would be to attend the interview session, possibly about an hour if that. Meet with me one more time to go over that transcript, to make sure that I have faithfully transcribed it, and it says what they said. And then if they would like to meet together at the end, I have said we could get together as a group and just kind of celebrate the end of it if they choose to. I also have, and currently in the process of going through the International Review Board approval, which is the Ethics Board through Capella University. And so they are reviewing all of my paperwork, all of my plans, all of my processes to make sure that the students are at minimal risk. And it will all be confidential as well, so there won't be no names or anything of that nature. I won't be naming the district, so truthfully, those of us in this room will know, but, you know, people who are reading it, it won't be people's names. It'll be, you know, just identifiers, pseudonyms, things of that nature.
So you will be assigning these students writing assignments?
No, I'm just going to interview them about their aspects of the writing experiences they've had in school as academic writers. So what have they experienced thus far, and how have they worked through that process? So they won't have to write anything, just their experiences as writers.
Very interesting. Very qualitative.
Yes, it is very qualitative, yes. I'm definitely a writer in that sense. I looked at quantitative for a while, which wasn't what I wanted.
Something very different.
Very nice, yes. And I would be more than happy to, you know, share with at the end, I can, you know, obviously share it with your students.
Where do you hold your participants from?
My plan is to recruit the high school, 10 through 12, who have been in courses that are with academic writing. There are courses that are more stronger writing classes, of course, but one of the exclusion criteria is they are students on my speech and debate team, because we would have a personal relationship. And so I want it to be students with whom I don't have any form of relationship other than we are in the same district. So it wouldn't be...and it would be voluntary. I have a letter that I've put together to recruit that some of the teachers would help pass out. There would be some posters I would hang in the hallway, and then there would be a collection jar, and I would collect their interest by student ID number, and then just draw random. And so I truthfully won't know who they are until I go to guidance and say, "I have seven numbers, and they have the names attached to them." And then I meet with them, and if they decide not to, then I go back to my container and randomly draw more, and so I have my seven. And then if they choose to at any point drop out, I just go back and I keep going, so.
And what do you hope to glean from this? How would you improve the writing? How would this improve the students' attitude or whatever toward writing?
I would hope that...I'm always interested, okay, in what the students think. I've always gotten feedback from the kids when we do something. What was good, what was bad? What can I do better? And I think that's what it is. We look at instructional techniques, and I ask them, but I don't really...they don't get a chance to just tell me their experience without me giving them the leading questions. And so in interviewing them, especially in phenomenological research, you really let it open-ended, and just let them describe it to you, what they want to share. And I think sometimes, if I give them something, and it may not be the best thing, and I want them to kind of share with me what the best way might be. And under those themes that they'll reveal, not knowing that they are, when I can compare and contrast the interviews, I hope to be able to pull some of those out and then implement those a little bit more. Maybe there's more with content, that content is a big thing. Or maybe it is more looking at grammar or the organization. What are those areas in which we really need to improve that we're missing on, that only asking the students will help?
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for being here. Also on your agenda for next week will be approval to host the PMEA with the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association, Pittsburgh Band Schedule, scheduled for January 7th through the 9th of 2015. That will be on your agenda. That concludes my report, and we'll go to Mrs. Albrecht for questions.
Yes, as you will see on your agenda, most of the things are to be put on the agenda for next week. Treasure, the Department of Bills, the gifts, grants, and donations. The final end to the meeting is what didn't happen on the Wednesday that we're going to hold, Snowman E. C. So it will happen on March 5th at the Central Administration Building. And Mr. Watson, is there anything you want to add about the gift grants and donations or the e-rates?
No, just that if you click on the attachment for the gift grants and donations, which I've done, I noticed that a wrong month comes up. That's my fault in the report, so I'll get the correct one, too. So if I could just summarize verbally for you, there was a donation by the back of the elementary PTO for the Desco family of $5,000. Pittsburgh section of S and E, AI and E, there was a $500 contribution for a third-grade field trip. And then the NES PTO made a contribution of $1,268.53 for the cafeteria group that's there. So I'll make sure to get that straightened out for you for next week. As far as the e-rate goes, every year, we're required to go out for certain telecommunication filings, it's a 470 application. This year, it was for our local long-distance cellphone and internet. Actually, it's email hosting. You'll see that we're proposing, we receive multiple proposals. Each of the one vendors that we're proposing are low bidders or the lowest-costing proposals. The one EarthLink is who we're currently working with, so they're still the lowest-priced vendor. Also, Sprint for cellphones is still the lowest-priced vendor. For the email hosting, I noted that we now have a new rule, which is free, but I still noted that that is historically, we operated through the IU, and there was a cost for that, which is going to be a point now, probably. But that is, that's what the e-rate report gives. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. W. That's it. Thank you. Student Activities Organization, Dr. Lawson?
Yeah, the Reston team finished second in the state this past weekend, and it's the highest team finish ever here at Latrobe. The girls' women's won the county championship, and those boys and girls' basketball teams have made the playoffs. The boys will be playing Duquette on Saturday, and the girls will be playing North Alabama Friday.
Exciting. Thank you. Dr. Zorch is not here, and there's nothing under his agenda, so we'll pick up anything next week. The U.S. Media Intermediate Liaison, the summary of the WIU Board meeting is attached. We will, on your agenda for next week, will be permission to authorize participation in the WIU Joint Purchasing Consortium for a multi-purpose paper bid for the 14-15 school year, and approval of the 2014-2015 WIU General Operating Budget, which can be done in February, March, or April. And the IU did not send copies of the budget for everyone, so we'll try to make sure that we get that.
Right. What I'll try and do is accept the report. Contact them tomorrow, get a copy, send it out to you. If not, we should push it back and do it in March. I did get a copy, and I can tell you there's no adjustment from last year to this year, so there's no increase across, but I would make sure everybody gets a copy.
They seem fairly pleased with the way the funding system's going and how it's affecting the budget.
Yeah, I can answer. The school district were very pleased the way they adjusted how they're handling, handling their funding throughout this current year and moving forward, and it's been a good thing for all parts.
I think that's a continual process.
It is. It'll continue that.
Okay, thank you. So if we don't get it for next week, we'll postpone that until, or approve. Board Policy P S B Liaison, Mrs. Albrecht?
Yes, we're asking Board members to look at the board policies, number 913 and 220 in their board policy books or online, whatever. in their board policy books or online, whichever they choose to do. And we're gonna have to have a policy committee meeting to make, to approve some changes if the changes aren't great. And we'll have that meeting soon, and we'll have to schedule it. We'll let you know next week what the schedule is and that. Okay. And then next week we'll have first review on board policy number 610 and 611, which you will see in your attachments, there are very minor changes in the numbers about bidding and budgeting purchases. And who has, the lighting didn't change at all, probably the numbers were being changed. We'll be voting on the first meeting of that next week. So we'll ask you all to make sure of what the policy committee meeting date is when we get it. And then we're appointing the District Civil Rights Coordinator, Dr. Tepper, and that will also be on your agenda next week.
We're gonna have some questions to work on.
Well... Good luck, Kim.
You're doing well. I'm going to see this now. We didn't have it.
Yeah, they, each school district is required to identify somebody within the district that is the person that handles maybe complaints by employees that feel they aren't being treated fair. So we have to identify who that person is that they need to go to to file a complaint. In most districts, you just wouldn't be able to rule who handles personnel hiring, that nature. That's why Dr. Tepper suggested.
We have policies in place, very similar, in instances of harassment or discrimination, things like that. There's a policy in place where somebody can make the complaint, and then there's an entire procedure that has to be followed, security, and that's...
That concludes my report. Thank you, Mrs. Eller. Transportation, Mr. Musa?
Thank you. You'll find in the attachment, the next meeting will be on April 30th, Senior High Free Garden.
Thank you. Technology, Mr. Paul?
We had a meeting this past month, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago, and this is...
Thank you. Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Harper?
I will ask the board next week to approve the resignations of three positions, three people. Gregory Kern is custodian effective since February 19th of this year, Luke Basciano as the first assistant baseball coach, and Tom Turnbull as the assistant baseball coach, who is resigning to apply for the big one that Basciano's position is creating. In addition, we will ask that the board approve a list of substitute teachers that have gone through the interview process, as well as to support or to recommend a head boy soccer coach by the name of Thomas Kennedy, who has gone through the interview process, a personal care assistant for the Gina High School Autistic Support Program, Gloria Callen, and also a recommendation will hopefully be made for a head football coach for next Tuesday, as well as substitute secretaries that are listed on the agenda. And other business, first of champions this month, February 20th at the high school. And new school this year is Little Shop of Horses, Friday and Saturday, March 7th to March 8th at Seven Thirty here at the high school on the Green. If you are interested in tickets, please make sure you see Mrs. Blaser as soon as possible. Tickets did go on sale, I think, correct, already? So want to make your seats, I'm sure it'll be a great show. Thank you, Mrs. Blaser.
Thank you. Anything else to be brought in?
I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, on Monday, February 17th, at Mont Pleasant High School. It's interesting, we talked about technology here tonight, this is coming up, but what it is, is James Deal, Innovator Technology Investigative Services, is presenting a program on the darker side of technology, and it includes digital stalking, social networking, sexting, cyber threats, cyber bullying, so on and so forth. This is open to the public, and like I said, it's on February 17th, Monday, so we, I think a lot of parents, it'd be interesting to see what he has to present. It's a big issue that needs to be addressed today, so I think it's...
Is that Mont Pleasant, do you have a time?
6:30 P.M.
6:30, Mont Pleasant High School? Thank you. Anything else you want to say? Okay, thank you for your time, Marjorie.